John, thanks for joining us today.
Glad to be here.
We really appreciate your time. So just briefly, just tell us a little bit, obviously, four terms on council, right? Eight years, so tell us why you're running for mayor now.
You know, after eight years on council and being a council member who always felt like I really represented not just the district that elected me, but the entire city, I just feel like I have more to offer after eight years on the council and understanding that Ron's leaving, there's an opening for the mayor, and recognizing what I've learned, what I've experienced, what I think I know, and also considering this many people who've encouraged me to run for mayor, who said, we want you to run for mayor, we'd like you to be mayor, and most of them were in District Nine, obviously. They're pretty satisfied with my leadership over there, but even people I've known from around the community for years. With that kind of encouragement and, as I said, the kind of the background that I've had being on council and understanding how council works, how it should work, and what the issues are, I just felt like it was the right thing for me to do to offer myself up as a candidate to be the next mayor for the city.
If you're elected mayor, what would be your, I mean, obviously, there are so many issues to talk about. What would be like your top issue?
Well, you know, I think it's important that the next mayor be a little more grounded in the community. And I'm not trying to say anything about any mayor previously, but I think that the mayor needs to be more seen in the city and in the community and even within the city council. You know, I think that as mayor, I would go around every council office and be listening to what the staff and what the council members think are important issues in their community. I would be out in the community, not just because I was invited to speak at a dinner, but because there's a neighborhood that's having an issue that's important that the city needs to address. And I think the mayor should be out there, listening to those kinds of things and understanding what those are. It's one thing to preside over a meeting when different city committees meet and discuss things, but if you don't really have a closer to the the community understanding of what those issues are, then you just become one vote. And I think the next mayor needs to be more than just a vote. It needs to be a voice that understands the community and is advocating for the community for the issues that, you know, people say are of concern to them, and educating the community. I think the mayor being able to go out and speak more casually, informally, at different neighborhoods and listen that way will make the mayor even more effective. Obviously, a lot of people believe that the mayor is the kind of person who should be the voice of the community, and I recognize that, but if you're not closely listening to the community, then you end up just being your voice and not their voice. So I think that's going to be an important part of what I do is getting more involved, being more involved as mayor and working more closely with the council, going out to their field office, for example. No one's ever been out to my field office, the city manager has, when we've had a meeting, but Ron's never been out there. And and I've heard in previous times that some of the more effective mayors in the past were really more closely involved with the council and with the community, and that's what I want to do.
So that's like outreach and, you know, listening, but is there like a specific issue that you would really want to focus on or draw attention to as mayor, like crime, affordable housing?
Sure, sure. You know, and I think that's, you know, an obvious question. And I'll give you the obvious answer that everybody will say, well, the first and foremost obligation of a city is protect the people, so public safety. But that should go without saying. What really concerns me today, that we need to have more jobs in the city and better paying jobs. It's it's one thing to bring in a company that says, well, yeah, we'll guarantee we'll pay at least twenty dollars an hour to any employee, and the average salary might be, you know, forty-five, fifty thousand for all of our employees, but we need to do better than that. We need to be looking to bring in companies that are going to be paying a much better start salary and continuing salary and offer more growth opportunities. So more jobs and better paying jobs is critical, but I also think housing is critical. We had a meeting at PCDC just this morning, and we were talking about housing. You know, the SHIP program set up a few years ago had a goal of trying to provide more housing for people in the lower economic areas, thirty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI, sixty percent AMI. We are creating more housing, but not nearly enough, and it doesn't nearly meet the needs of the people in the lower economic area. The thirty percent housing number we were using, it was a goal to try and get thirty percent of all the new product being developed with thirty percent affordability. Right now, we're at fifteen percent, not even twenty percent, even though we've been working on this for years. But to provide that affordability, I think it takes a bigger partnership with the city. Too often, and I've sat on the Housing Trust and I've sat on several committees that have looked at this, too often, we we find that the developers who would like to build affordable housing are having a hard time because of funding that's available. And a lot of times, that funding is coming from major lenders who are demanding a return of fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent on their money, even on interim financing for a year or two. And that's huge. The city, on the other hand, could borrow money at five percent, lend it out as a partner in these projects at seven percent, get that return and have a revolving source of money to continue to provide lower cost financing, which would allow us to build more affordable housing, lower costs. So, you know, that's something that I'm keen on, that I'd like to see us really look at. I've proposed it several times, that we look at having a separate bond issue for housing, and I think it it ought to be about half a billion dollars, five hundred million dollar proposal.
Housing bond, so last, in the last bond series, or however you want to call it, last bond election, housing was like?
Hundred and fifty million out of that.
But there were four other, four or five other, so you want a separate standalone?
Separate standalone.
Half a billion dollars in housing.
Right, well.
To establish a revolving fund?
That would be part of it, and also to go ahead and, you know, do more things in the area of rehabilitation, more trying to incentivize in a lot of different ways, keeping the housing that we have and improving it, as well as building more affordable housing. And I think there's a lot of ways that that money can really benefit the community. We've got a hundred and thirty-one thousand people who are renting a house today, who are paying more than they literally can afford to pay, they're challenged to meet that rent. We've got another? Hundred and thirty-one thousand. We just had a report on that this morning, and that was as of twenty twenty-three.
People or families or?
Well, units.
Yeah.
A hundred and thirty-one thousand units.
Yeah.
And then the same for people who have mortgages. Another, I think it was sixty thousand people who are paying over and above what they should be paying for a mortgage because they're just financially challenged to meet, you know, the interest rates and things like that. And, you know, I, if we're going to continue to attract people, we need to have public safety, we need to have jobs, we need to have housing, and, you know, and we need to make sure that people are going to have water and electricity, and they're going to have good educational system in the city. And not all of those are the direct responsibility of a city council, but all of those impact the lives of the people in the city. So as a mayor and as a city council, one way or another, we need to be addressing and supporting those kinds of things that are going to keep people here and attract more people here.
Well, that dovetails with the next two questions pretty well, and they deal with existing programs, right? So the first one is ready to work. If you're elected mayor, do you support continuing ready to work? Does it need to change? Do you want to take it back to voters to nix it?
You know, I think it needs change, it needs a lot of modification. Early on, I told the mayor and I told a few other people that I felt like we weren't overcoming the barriers that people were facing, who should be getting this training to upgrade their skills to to earn more. And part of it is, you're you are looking for people to come into a training program that could be twelve weeks long, sixteen weeks long, six months long, and how do you do that and still take care of your family? Particularly if you're a single parent. You know, there's a lot of women who want to go through these training programs, but what do they do with their children? How do they take care of them financially if you're, you know, into training for weeks and weeks and weeks at a time? So that's been a barrier that I think a lot of people who want to have the training, who could benefit from it, simply haven't been get beyond to get into the training program. It's why I don't think we've met the kind of numbers, the expectation that we hope to have. Yeah, and a big problem with that, obviously, is childcare. And I think the crisis nursery that we're talking about doing in the city is just one step in addressing that. But, you know, I I know that the state supports childcare through our state work program, and and we've got Project Head Start, which isn't childcare, but still helps manage somewhat a parent's ability to maybe get training while their children are going through school. But there's more we need to do in that. But the the biggest, I think, fault in the system is that we've got over two hundred businesses that said, we want to support this program. I sign up, I'll hire people, and they simply aren't doing that. And part of it is because, and I understand the business aspect of that, if they've got a job opening and they've got five people applying, and they do, do you take the person who just finished ready to work training? Yeah, they got the training they need, they can do the job, but you've got three other people who have three years' experience, five years' experience, and they want to do that job. The businesses are are making the decision not to hire the ready to work, but to hire the experienced that have worked people to do that. I think that's a fault with the system, and it's, I think that we need to really get our partnership, our partners really step up and say, okay, we'll take them in, we'll give them the opportunity at the cost of maybe somebody with three to five years' experience. And the city needs to incentivize that a little bit, probably offer, you know, some financial assistance, which we've done in a limited way, to encourage them to bring them in. And if it doesn't work, at least they gave it a sincere commitment. And and we've maybe shared part of that cost, because we brought in more money for that program than we originally anticipated and probably will before it's over. We need to use that money more wisely in overcoming barriers for people to get into the program and get the businesses to to bring them on board.
So stipends, basically?
I think so, which is what we did in the first program that we started before. And, you know, a three or four or five hundred dollar stipend a month for somebody who's going to go through three months of training, that fifteen hundred dollars, that five hundred a month can make the difference between making sure that maybe grandma's going to watch the kids, but you've got food on the table that month for those kids, things like that. So, yeah, I think that we really need to give that more emphasis in the ready to work program. I'm not ready to scrap it, but I think it it needs more work, and I think the program understands that, too.
The other big program, of course, is pre-K for S A. If elected mayor, does that still need support and want to continue?
Yeah, you know, I'm totally committed to that, and I have been all along. You know, I was a teacher for twenty-five years, and sometimes I was even called in the pre-K classroom to fill in while the teacher went to talk to some parents. And one of the most frightening experiences I had was a bunch of three and four-year-olds running up and grabbing my leg when I was in there, saying, hi, 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 let's play, you know. Kids were kids, and and I love my teaching experience, but I also understand pre-K for S A and its value. And it's more than just a value to the two thousand kids who are in the program, because it's not just two thousand, it's two thousand a year, year after year after year. For seven or eight years, that's fourteen to fifteen thousand students who have gone through that program directly through the city. But even more than that, that program has expanded to help other schools and other school districts implement more efficient programs for the thousands of kids they're teaching as well. A lot of people don't think of that, but I do, I recognize that. I think it's so important for us to share the success of that program with a lot of other school districts that are struggling to do that. Yes, the state, the state sent them funding, but it's not nearly enough. And, you know, the right kind of training, the right kind of resource support that we can offer through Ready to Work has a wonderful value to these other school districts that are trying to expand their early learning programs.
So my question, your fellow colleagues have, to twenty twenty-three, crafted a council consideration request for Crisis Nursery?
For what again?
A Crisis Nursery?
Yes.
And this year, that's, you know, it's taken some time, but it's actually made some progress now, and there's a feasibility study that is in the works. Is that something that you're aware of?
Oh, yes.
What do you see that that looking like for the city? Is it needed, and how would you play a role?
You know, it is absolutely needed, and, you know, I was one of the advocates for making sure that we brought in as many early child learning centers as we could into the state's program to get that tax break this past year, and I think we need to continue to work. We need more good, solid childcare facilities, early learning type facilities for children in this community. But we also need to have that Crisis Nursery, that place where if there's a crisis with the family, sometimes it's related to jobs, sometimes it's personal issues, we need to have a facility that can help those people in that critical time to make sure their children are cared for so that they have the time and the ability to address that more critical need that they're facing, whether it's economic or healthcare or just an emergency of some kind in the family. So, yeah, I'm I'm a strong supporter of that. You know, whatever this city can do to support our kids, whether it's ready to work or whether it's continuing Head Start, whether it's a Crisis Center Nursery, I, it's just incumbent upon us to provide those kinds of opportunities.
Okay, Senator, the mayor has two two particular responsibilities as ex officio, as a de facto ex officio member of the two city utilities, Saws and CPS. So I'll start with Saws. Do you think the city and Saws are doing enough, not enough, more than enough to protect the city's water quality, the supply of the quality? And then that's broadly, and then specifically, what is your take on the situation in Waholeti Ranch and the discharge permit that's being considered there and where it wants to go?
You know, those are all good questions, and they're tied together around Saws. You can ask other people at Saws. I am the only council member, besides the mayor, who's attended Saws meetings. My first couple of years, I went regularly just to understand how they were working, because when I was on early, there was a motion, an effort to raise our water bills. And I I thought to myself, how can I make this decision when I don't know how Saws arrived at their recommendation? I could just take it for granted that they did all their due diligence, and this is the best recommendation they could make. But when we hear from the community about the hardships they face in trying to, you know, pay their water bills or their electric bills, I just felt I wanted to be there, I wanted to learn how they do this and and understand that. I'll also say this, you know, before I was elected to a council, I was not a big fan of the big water project that we were looking at at doing from Burleson County down here. Pardon me?
Vista Ridge.
Yeah, Vista Ridge. And I, I, like some other people, believe that's something that we don't need that much water, we won't need it for fifty years, why are we investing so much now? But I have to say, since I've been on council, I've turned around a hundred and eighty degrees on that. And I am so glad that we made that investment, because we wouldn't be as safe, water safe as we are today if we hadn't made that investment. So I I think Saws has done a pretty good job of diversifying the water that we have available to us and making sure that it's good, clean water. The interesting thing that a lot of people don't know is when we bring water in from other areas, we actually run it through a system to go ahead and make sure the quality, the taste of that water is equal to what we bring out of the aquifer, so that people don't see there's some kind of a difference between this water and that water. And and I think that's a great way of doing it. Now, I've I've gone to a lot of the Saws facilities, I want to see them completely expand what they're doing to provide more water. You know, the ASR, the Underground Water Saving Program, I think is terrific. We've been pumping water in there when we've had extra water, it's there when we need it. I think we need to expand the desalinization plant we have, it runs. I think we should be forward-thinking and be prepared to run that even more. And they built one unit, and they've got room for the other right next to it, I think we should do that. So I've been a a close watcher of Saws, I was the chair of the Municipal Utilities Committee for two years, and watched to make sure as we had gotten through the pandemic and then later through Winter Storm Yuri, that Saws took all the steps to be better prepared for any other kind of an emergency situation, just like CPS has and the city has, and I've I watch those very closely. So from from those perspectives, I think I'm the most knowledgeable councilman who paid more attention to it. I understand how it works, I'm very supportive of it. I will say that I don't always agree with what they want to do when it comes to rates. I always feel like they need to justify that rate hike to meet every penny before I'm going to vote for it. But for the most part, I think they will. The other part about Waholeti Ranch and and that project, I worry about that. I really, it's not in the city, but I don't support the idea of building five thousand houses out there and letting them have their own water treatment facility that'll simply go into, you know, the creeks that are going to eventually fill into parts of San Antonio's, you know, water system. I know it's not direct, but indirectly, I'm afraid it can have an adverse effect on parts of the aquifer. So, you know, I don't support that. But that's, you know, that's bigger fight for the people who live over and around there. And I know the mayor stepped in that, he's going out, I guess it's easy for him to do that. I remember before he became mayor, he stepped into the, he stepped into the back controversy. So he's the kind of person who's willing to maybe take those chances, and it's not that I'm not willing to take a chance. I just think that they're moving in a good direction on how they're working on it right now. You know, there used to be an old saying, you can't fight City Hall. I don't believe that's true, but I'm starting to think you can't fight the state government. And I think that's that's the block in that whole effort.
Let's move over to CPS side. Because because CPS has rather robust power generation capacity. It lasts a few years, always had surplus revenue, and then this question becomes what to do with that surplus revenue? So, you know, philosophically, do you, do you, do you think that money should be used, that surplus revenues should be used to, you know, straight rebate to customers or to general fund or plowed into, you know, infrastructure investments like transmission lines and new power sources or something else?
I think that's a fair question, and, you know, a lot of people don't understand the mix behind that. For example, I believe it was the last budget cycle, we ended up looking at about forty million, I don't know, fifty million dollars more coming to the city than we had projected. What people doesn't, don't know is that CPS Energy brought in about a hundred and fifty million more or a hundred and eighty million more than they projected, because they sold it. We just got that additional part of that additional unscheduled revenue. And then this year, this past cycle we're in right now, almost the same thing. This time, we were looking at thirty million dollars more coming to us than we anticipated. But, you know, CPS Energy brought in a hundred and fifty million more than they had originally budgeted for. And the main thing about those two years is that I think they really helped offset what a lot of people were fearful of was another increase in the rate, because the rate that we approved most recently brings in about eight, eighty million dollars more a year in revenue to CPS. And if they're made a hundred and fifty million more this year, they don't need another rate increase next year, because they're already making more than they had budgeted for. So the the bottom line to me is, I hope they continue making that kind of money, because what they make, not what the city makes, but what they make, is enough to continue to allow them not to have to raise basic rates, because they're bringing in more than they actually anticipated, because they they haven't decided that they can count on everything being this warm. Now, maybe next year, they'll start saying, maybe we better count on an extra seventy-five million. And so they'll build that into that budget. But I think it's really helped us not to have to face any kind of more dramatic, more quickly coming rate increases. And and also, I think they've made wise decisions in in expanding those facilities, because they haven't had to raise any kind of costs to the to the consumer in doing that. Now, there's more work that needs to be done. You know, we're closing down those two coal fire plants, I've been totally in favor of that. Turning one of them into a a gas plant is okay, temporarily. I want to see us looking more at solar and wind and other alternatives, even the micro nuclear plants that are being developed, I think those have a future in San Antonio. And I believe that CPS has been on the right track. But if we get back to that extra money that comes to the city, you know, I think that we have enough needs in this city, that we can use it to improve the quality of life for people in our city in some areas and, you know, provide, make sure we continue to provide the services, because right now, you know, we're facing the possibility of not getting reimbursed for three hundred and twenty-five million dollars that has been pledged to us by the federal government through a lot of federal programs in the current budget we're in right now. And they've already, I know you've heard, sent us a letter saying they're not going to pay us the twelve or thirteen million they already owe us. Well, what about the rest of the hundreds of millions in our budget that we may not get? So I'm all for making sure that if there's additional revenue coming to the city that we have the ability to use to fill those gaps, to help provide the services that people need, because we're a growing city, without having to raise taxes, then I say I'm all for it.
In other words, you say, put it in the general fund and you can put it to use in the city?
That's right. As long as we don't need it to keep from having rate increases.
Did you vote for the rebate, you voted against the rebate then? The twenty-eight dollar rebate or?
Yeah, you know, I I thought that it should have been a better deal than that, but, you know, the majority of the council went with, actually, I think I did go along with it.
You voted for it.
Yeah, I voted for it, yeah.
But philosophically, you'd like to see it?
I would have rather seen it used another way, but I I think that, you know, the important thing about council is we need to be able to work together as much as we can. And, you know, you can always be an outlier when you give your opinion or your thought, but if we want the support of the community in this city with the city government, we need to be together more than we're separate and apart. So that was one of those things where I felt one way and I I let people know how I felt, but I realized for the betterment of the community, we need to be united. That was a pretty controversial issue.
It was, yeah. And then there was an additional controversy.
There's always controversy.
Yeah. Speaking of controversy, do you support using city funds for abortion travel?
No. You know, let me put it to you this way. I don't think that's within the realm of the expectation of the people in this community for us to spend their tax dollars. Now, before the law changed a few years ago, that kind of limits what we can do as a city when it comes to abortion. If if Planned Parenthood came and said, we want to build a Planned Parenthood clinic here, and we need to get zoning changed, we need to get planning approved, and we need council approval, I'm for a woman's right to choose. I feel like, well, that's within the purview of the city council, handling planning, handling zoning, making approvals for those kinds of actions. That's part of our job and part of our responsibility. But when it comes to taking city taxpayers' dollars for a person to travel out of state for a, for an operation, you know, for an abortion, I would say the same thing. What if somebody needed to go somewhere to have a heart transplant? Are we going to start paying for that, too? Abortion is maybe a lot more controversial, but the principle is still the same. It's not within the realm of what I think people expect city government to do. And so, you know, I just don't support that.
I guess, I guess the argument would be that you can get a heart transplant in Texas.
Well, you know, maybe we can talk about other kinds of things you can't get in Texas that you need to go somewhere else where the expertise is there, and it's it's the same function.
No, I understand. The arena, so do you support using city funds, not, I was talking about the arena, not Project Marvel as a whole, but the arena?
Sure, yeah.
Do you support using city funds in some way to, on a deal for a new arena downtown?
You know, I've always said, well before they even started talking about moving Wolf Stadium and before we heard anything about the arena movie, I would not pay one city tax dollar to build a sports stadium for any interest. I just, I just don't think we should do that. I've heard too many horror stories about how it hasn't been to the advantage of the cities that have invested in that. But I do want to clarify how I feel and what I think is relevant for both the baseball stadium and a new arena. And I've come to understand that growth should pay for the growth that goes on in the city. So if developers are going to go out and develop somewhere, then they should pay Saws for the cost of development. Growth pays for growth. Growth pays for growth. When we talked about building the baseball stadium, I made it perfectly clear, and the council made it perfectly clear, that before we turn one shovel to build that stadium, number one, we're not going to put one dollar of city tax money into it. But number two, we want to know that the investors that want to build that are also doing the development that is going to raise the tax value of property around there that will bring the revenue to the city to cover the cost of building that stadium. Which is why creating a partnership between the owners and the TERS and relying on the revenue developed around there to support the stadium, whether it's apartments or restaurants or bars or whatever, that is a key component of paying for it, not your tax dollars from your house or mine. I feel the same way about what we're looking at for the arena. I would not want to take any general tax dollars to pay for that. But if we can create an area that is going to generate additional revenue, that if it wasn't developed, the revenue would never be there anyway, then let's allocate that as a shared cost. And what we already know is that we've got a good idea of how many millions of dollars we can get in state revenue from the growth in the hotel tax in that whole Project Marvel district, that we'd go towards that. We know that we've got a TERS, we know that we've got another state-funded program that we can use to raise money. We know the county's willing to be a partner in it. And most of all, we know the developers are willing to be partners in it. And so if we come to an understanding where everybody contributes and we contribute our share of growth rather than tax dollars, then I think it may be a smart deal to make. And, and we're still in the process of looking at all those pieces and making sure they can really happen. And until that information is about as solid as we can get, I'm still a little, you know, reluctant about saying, "Yes, we're going to do it." But I think it's, it's moving to be more likely.
The baseball stadium is quite unique in that the principal owners of the baseball team are also the principal owners of the commercial real estate development company that owns the property around it. You don't find that kind of confluence of interest? I have never seen it anywhere. You look at what they did in Los Angeles, you know, with the Rams. Stan Gronk, he's not a real estate developer. He just happened to own enough money to build a stadium. And other places where they built municipal stadiums, that hasn't been the case. It just happened to be that these two guys are majority owners of the baseball team and the majority owners of the real estate company.
Sure.
So you're not going to have that to fall back on with the Spurs.
Well, I think we do have some of that to fall back on. There's other land around that area that's available that would be ideal for development.
But the Spurs are not going to be real estate developers.
Well, some of the owners of the Spurs are the owners of the baseball team. There are investors in there. I'm sure they are giving consideration to property along Chavez, property nearby on St. Mary's, property on the other side of 281, where we're considering building a land bridge to connect both sides more. You know, we didn't know a lot about the property around the baseball field until they started saying, "We want to go ahead and build a baseball field." So we don't know what's going on around, but I presume, maybe that's not safe to do, but I presume there's a lot of interests that are willing to be partners in this long-term process. Because it's not going to happen next year. You know, this is going to be twenty-eight, twenty-nine, probably before this is carried out. And if, and I think we can get a lot of those commitments. But also, if we institute the, the request from the state to use their growth in state sales tax, that starts now. That starts this year, next year, the year after, before we ever turn a shovel on building the arena. So we can start banking some of that money and have some money upfront to ensure the investment from all of the different partners. It's still a complicated process to go through. But what I've found since I've been on council is everything we do in city business is complicated, a lot more complex than people realize.
Sure. Can I ask you a question? You were a teacher.
Yeah.
Is, did you retire as a public school teacher?
No, I retired as a teacher from Little Flower Catholic School. I did retire from public schools. Yeah, and then I taught there.
But teaching was the last profession you?
That's right. Teaching was the last thing I did full-time.
As a daily job?
That's right.
And what did you teach?
Predominantly, in most of my twenty-five years of teaching, I was a special ed teacher. So, you know, I taught students with learning disabilities. But almost every one of them had either physical, mental, or emotional disabilities too. So it was a very challenging job. And, you know, you taught, people ask me, "Are you happy with what you do as a council member?" And I say, "It's not the kind of job where you're happy. It's the kind where you feel satisfied with what you're able to do." But I was happy being a teacher. I really enjoyed that, even though I was working with really challenging groups. So, yeah, twenty-five years as a teacher, most of it in SAISD, a lot of years at Jefferson High School, working with kids who really had tremendous needs.
And you were military, police, and the Air Force?
Yeah, I served from seventy-one to seventy-five, and that's what brought me here. You know, I came here and I was going through basic training. I stayed for law enforcement training. I became a dog handler, went through canine school. I met a local gal at the USO and married her and settled here.
Did you go into teaching directly from the military?
No, no. You know, my first job after I got out of the military, I worked at St. Peter's and St. Joseph Children's Home with kids. And I did that for several years. And then I went to work for Bear County Mental Health Mental Retardation Center for a while. And I was at a clinic over on the southeast part of town, right across from South Sand High School. But, you know, those jobs weren't, weren't consistent, and I really wanted to get back into something paid a little bit better, I thought, so I got into real estate. And I was a real estate salesman and a broker and an office manager for about twelve years. Unfortunately, those twelve years were predominantly during the nineteen eighties, and it was, it was hard. And so by nineteen eighty-nine, I decided, you know, this business is, is just too risky, and I wanted to go ahead and go back to school and become a teacher. And I did.
You taught at Catholic schools and public schools?
Yeah, I taught at Little Flower Catholic School and ended at Holy Spirit Catholic School. And in between, I taught at SAISD and a year at Northeast. I taught at Driscoll Middle School that they're now closing. I feel bad about that. It was a good school.
Do you sometimes, well, there's one, I think there's, any, do you think the city should be working more proactively with the Trump administration on immigration? Should the city be, is it cooperating enough with the Trump administration on immigration?
I don't know how we can be proactive. I have no idea how we can be proactive because I don't think the Trump administration listens to anybody. I don't think they're listening to Congress. But of course, Congress isn't saying much. I don't think they're listening to any particular state or any particular city. I think that the, the administration in Washington has its own ideas on what it wants to do. And I think what we're going to have to do is see how we handle the fallout that comes to San Antonio. But I, I can't see us being proactive. I know members of our community have gone up to Austin, and I didn't go to the recent SA to DC trip, but a lot of people did. They couldn't talk to anybody who had any kind of answers about anything that's happening. I mean, we can say what we want, but there was nobody there who could say, "Well, we can do that." Which is a change from what we'd had going on in the past, so. And I don't see any response from our state or local officials when it comes to what, what the concerns are in this community and people speaking about those concerns. I'll say the same thing at the state level. They don't listen to us. And I'm very worried about that. But all we can do is do the best we can to protect and defend our community by providing the services that they require.
Just speaking at the state level, what are your thoughts about, you know, we've had the Death Star Bill? There've been a lot of efforts by Governor Greg Abbott or the Texas Legislature to, what they would say, they would say that bringing regulatory certainty to cities, but others would say it's to curb the power of cities. So what are your thoughts on, on this tug of war that we see between cities and the state?
You know, I almost can't understand why this happens, other than the fact that I think too many of the legislators are too distant from the big cities certainly, and even other communities around the state. And I think that's part of the problem. They see it through a different lens than, than I do as a council member. Your city government, and to a certain extent, your county government like here, is closest to the people. We understand what their concerns are and their needs are. And that's why we go to Austin to kind of advocate. It's not, we lobby. That may be a word that you use to describe a bunch of lawyers who get hired to go express what the city is looking for, but we advocate. But as council members, we can't run up there all the time because we've got things we're doing right here at home. So we express what those needs are and those concerns are to a team that goes and represents us and advocates for the people in the city. And why the Texas Legislature is afraid of that, I don't understand. Now, when you talk about what the state is doing to kind of curb what cities can do, I have to say, I was really worried about that when it first came out. But I also understand that what we usually do in the city shouldn't be of, of a major concern with what's going on at the state level. Because we don't try and do anything to interfere with anybody's ability to run a business or be successful or, or do things in the city. But like every law or every ordinance that ever been, that has ever been made, the reason why we create ordinances or the reason why the state and federal government creates laws is because somebody or some group of people were doing something wrong, something they shouldn't. And people speak up and say, "There ought to be a law," or "There ought to be a regulation." And there's nothing wrong with that. That's how our country has worked for years. So, you know, I think that we need to address the concerns that come up here in the city, and we need to take the steps that provide for the best quality of life for people in our community. And sometimes that means we make some hard decisions. Now, I haven't always agreed with some of those decisions that we make sometimes. An example with me is the horse-drawn carriages. I think we never should have gone ahead and said, "We're going to shut them down and put them out of business in a year or three or five years." That's me. The majority of the council felt differently. Now, I, I don't know if the state's going to come down on us because of horse-drawn carriages. That could be an example of something where they say, "We're overstepping by interfering with the business." But I, I don't believe that, that we're very ambitious about doing those kinds of things. But there, there will come a day when, you know, the Attorney General is going to say, "You're overstepping something when you do this," or the Secretary of State, or, you know, the, the legislature's going to say, "We're not going to let you do this anymore." And if we believe it's right for the people in the city, we need to fight about that. We need to stand up and say, "This is why." They may not listen to us and they may not, they may do what they want to do, but they do that at the risk of the community saying, "Well, we don't like what you've done. We don't want you to do that." And hopefully, the community decides, "We want to make some changes so that we don't have this being put on us by people who don't understand our interests or concerns."
Some people feel that way about the abortion travel issue, right? That, that one, the state could respond to that if it's funded, but two, that whatever the cost is in litigation, it's worth it to make this statement.
Some people feel that way, that's true. Yep.
Public safety, at the beginning of our conversation, you said, "Public safety," I'm paraphrasing, of course, but public safety is inherently the top issue.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you've been on council for eight years. What are your thoughts about the two-thirds general fund cap on public safety? I mean, obviously, things are different now with state legislation, but, you know, is that a cap that you support? You know, do you think public safety should be increased from where it's at right now? How do you balance the police fire versus parks and roads and sidewalks?
Sure. Well, you know, let me step back from what we talked about, that when I entered the Air Force, I, I became a police officer. I was canine handler. I patrolled neighborhoods. You know, I wore a uniform, I carried a gun, I arrested people for drunken, disorderly, and silly things like that, or, or kids out doing things they shouldn't do. And so I have a little bit of an idea of what it might be like, you know, to enforce the laws in, in our community. And I've always been an advocate for increasing the size of the police department from day one when I first was elected. At that time, we had right around two thousand police officers, a little bit more, more or less, depending on how many people resigned that month and how many people going to, through school. But I've always advocated for more. And over the first four or five years, we increased gradually. We get up to about twenty-two hundred police officers. But it wasn't, I didn't think it was enough, and the community didn't believe it was enough. And then, what, two and a half years ago, we decided to really do an expansion and we voted to increase the size of the police by fifteen percent. That's a pretty big jump. What I've had a problem with is the way we've stretched that out. And I, I really believe we should have done that within three years and city manager. And then some of the other council members said, "Well, it's a budgetary concern. We may not have the funds to do that, so we're going to do it over like five years." Public safety is the number one concern of the people in the community, and it's the number one responsibility of a city government. So I've always been supportive of increasing the size of the police force. I've been supportive of the program that we've had, that we've done in partnership with UTSA, that has developed the hotspot policing to try and identify those, those more dangerous areas and paying closer attention to that. I think it's had some effect. I'm, I'm always for providing better public safety, and sometimes it's a matter of resources. For example, you look at the fire department. I think we still need to have more EMS units. I still think we need to have, you know, more firefighters. I think we have to have more parity between the police and fire. Part of that problem is they always negotiate different times and have different goals in their negotiations. And I am concerned that we don't commit more than two-thirds of our budget to public safety. It is the number one goal, but I don't believe that it needs to take sixty-seven, sixty-eight, seventy percent of our budget to provide public safety. So I've been, I've been relatively comfortable, and I know over the last few years with the contract settlements we've come to, that we're right around sixty-one, sixty-two percent. And, you know, if we got up to sixty-four, sixty-five percent, I'm not going to cry about it, especially if we see the value of what that increase is going to bring to the community. But I would not want to see us sacrifice so many other important services that we provide in the city. The, the purpose of those or the value of those may always be up for scrutiny or determination. As a matter of fact, one thing that I've talked about and I'm very high on is that I think we need to get back to basics when we take a look at our own government and how it's running today. I think we need to take a good, hard look at every city department, at every program, how they're working. Are they continuing to function the way they were intended when they were first created? Particularly programs and services. Is there a way of consolidating, saving money? Is a way of, do we need to expand some because they're not meeting the expectations that the community has? And I'm not, I'm not like the people in Washington that want to take a hatchet to everything. I'm not like my friend Mark White, who wants to make sure we reduce everything as much as we can. But I think it's very well worth looking more closely at being responsible every few years to take a good, hard look at ourselves and see what we can improve, what we don't need to do anymore, how we can combine and save, save money in the community.
Is that an endorsement of zero-based budgeting every few years?
You know, I had really given that some serious consideration. The only way we could do zero-based budgeting honestly is like through a two- or three-year program. Because you just can't say, "Next year, we're going to do zero-based budgeting." You've got to have time to look and see how that could happen. And it's probably a good year's worth of examination and bringing in some outside eyes to take a look at these things. And then talk about, okay, how can we do that in the future? And then doing it in the future. I think it can be more expeditious really to go ahead and just take a good, hard, internal look and maybe bring in some outside eyes along with that team to evaluate what we're doing today, how we can make more immediate and direct improvements, and what needs to be taken a look at at a longer term, and how we can address maybe improvements in those areas.
Who do you think is the most effective mayor?
The most effective mayor?
In San Antonio.
In my past?
In your view.
You know, I, honestly, I think all of them have been effective in what they've been focusing on. I mean, Castro did a lot and brought on, you know, our, our child education program. I thought that was, that was a critical thing. I think Ron has really brought in a bit of conscience early on with us. I think Ron has really brought in a bit of conscience early on with us. And having us think and look at things through a lens of, you know, being more fair with everybody and being a more compassionate city, I think there's anything wrong with that. You know, I think Hardburger was the kind of guy who really wanted to make sure things got done. You know, it's hard to evaluate, prior mayors who only served four years. Because I've, I learned and, and I think all of us realize now, you can't get anything done in two years. And you can barely get anything done in four years, which is why I'm glad we've gone to four year terms. Because I think you can get a lot more accomplished. You can see things through, at least come close to seeing through, seeing things through in four years. So, you know, I, I don't know that we've had a bad mayor. Or I don't know that we've had one that I thought, boy, I wish we never elected that person. And they all had, I think, their contribution to the city or communities within the city that benefited from, you know, their, their service, so.
Choose one for the survey, just so you know.
I have to choose one for the survey? Okay, I'll go back to Henry Cisneros.
Okay.
I was impressed with Henry Cisneros. I had, I actually worked to help him get elected. Yep.
Just a couple other questions.
Sure.
This is, I don't believe this is as much of an issue in District Nine, but certainly it's a city issue. And you could correct me, maybe it's a huge issue in District Nine, I'm not aware. Roaming dogs.
Not a big issue in District Nine.
So I think that's, so I'm curious to hear your thoughts on how, how the city is going about to address this issue. But also, since you're from District Nine, I feel like part of the problem is that we have a disconnect. That it's a huge issue in some parts of our city.
Sure.
In nonexistent.
Right.
And the northern districts. And somehow that, the fact that we have residents that don't feel or live with that experience allows this really dangerous issue to kind of perpetuate itself and continue. So how do you, how, how, are you satisfied? All of us is to say, are you satisfied with what the city's doing to address it? But then if elected, how do you bridge that gap? At least, or maybe you don't agree that there is a gap, but that's my, my perception.
You know, I, I believe the people who live all over town, including like Northside, Districts Eight, Nine and Ten. I think they all understand we have an animal problem. They don't see it in their neighborhood, but I really believe they understand it exists. And it affects the lives of a lot of people in the city and it's a major concern. And I think that all the council members feel that way. At least, I hope they do and I believe they do. It may not affect a lot of people in my district. But I've said this, and I say it all the time, a councilman for one district is more than just a councilman for that district. People in District Nine may have elected me, but people all over the city expect me to make decisions that affect their lives. We do that at City Hall every day. We did that yesterday. One way or another, decisions I help make affect the lives of everybody in the city. And I'm very cognizant of that so that I'm aware of the critical nature of the dog problem that we have throughout the city. And yes, it's in one, two, three, four, five. But not much, maybe a little bit in six, maybe a little bit in seven, but not much in eight, nine and 10. But it's, it is a citywide problem. And I think that we've put in a lot of resources, 18 to 20 million dollars on animal care service. That's a huge amount of money, even for a, a city with a big budget like ours. The problem I see is how we're addressing it. And I think, yes, we need to continue to provide the resources so that there can be good response to the needs in those parts of town. But I think the greatest effort needs to be in holding individuals accountable. The pet owners need to recognize and understand and live up to their accountability as pet owners for taking proper care of those pets. I think we need to start educating people in this community better about that kind of a responsibility. I think we need to do more to educate our children in the schools. You know, I've heard a lot of stories where kids in school learned about the environment and they came home and told mom or dad, you know, why are you throwing that in the trash? That should be recycled. Kids are smart. If we can help educate them about their responsibility, because heck, most of the pets that get bought, get bought for the kids. And then they turn around after six months and they stop playing with them like they do a toy and it becomes a chore. We need to educate all pet owners about the responsibility of pet ownership and hold those who don't accept that responsibility accountable. And I, and we just need to do a lot more with that. So educating our children, educating pet ownership, making sure if somebody goes and adopts a pet at ACS or Animal Defense League, that they're giving a document and they sign that recognizing they are taking a responsibility to their fellow citizens to protect them by monitoring the behavior and controlling the behavior of their animal. And not letting them roam free and create a threat to other people in the community. I think if people started having to read that and sign that a little bit more, maybe it'll start sinking in that I do have an obligation, not just to the animal, but to the community at large. So it's always hard educating people. It's like trying to educate people who vote for or for mayor. You got 27 people to learn about. So I can understand the challenge that people may face. But we've got to move that understanding more into the community to help overcome, or at least reduce part of the problem. And I think the, the more we spay and neuter animals. Every animal that's picked up by any agency should be checked. If it's not spayed and neutered, it should be. And that should just be a requirement. And gradually, I think those educational and those other steps should begin to reduce this problem. But it's not going to be this year or next year. The new animal care director isn't going to solve the problem. But hopefully, may, may bring in some ideas and offer some new ways of addressing them that'll, that'll help.
Last question for me. Do you want to respond to the article from, the recent article about hiring a campaign staffer?
Oh, sure.
You know, there's, I don't know if you all saw the article. John hired a campaign staffer for a candidate in D nine. I think you've endorsed a candidate also, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess the concern is that, is it too much of your thumb on the scale?
No.
In that race?
Let me just mention with Cole Osborne, he had worked for me for four years.
Yeah.
And I knew the quality of his work. He always did a great job. He didn't, he didn't work for Angie Taylor Arumburu. But he voluntarily gave her some information that he had accumulated working some other campaigns. I don't, I, I don't think he was paid for anything. So it wasn't like I, I hired a campaign staffer. But I hired somebody who maybe was an advisor for a period of time. He's not doing that anymore. And, and I did that because I know the value that he has working in the community. And, you know, I don't care if it was just going to be for the last three months of my campaign or the last three weeks of my campaign. I knew he could add value to our community. People knew him. He could go out there and talk about issues that people recognized. And he always did good work for me.
When you say campaign, you mean your term, your last?
Yeah, during the, the rest of my term. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But then there's, there's a woman too, right?
Right, yeah.
I don't know if she's been hired yet, but it's.
She hasn't been hired yet, but I asked the city to hire her and that's Kelsey Brandt. Same thing. She worked for me for two years. She did a great job. She helped me with two projects that are, that are still moving forward. She was an initiator on what we call the safe baby devices being put into the fire stations around the city. We've started to move on that. The first one is going to be on Austin Highway. We have two others that have been located that we're going to be putting those devices in. She brought that to my attention by some reading she did three years ago. I, I would be glad to have her with me as we close that out now. And we start seeing a fire station that's going to put the first one in. She also helped me with something that I had a meeting about just before I came over here and that you'll be hearing about in the next two weeks. And it's medical debt relief.
Yeah, I saw that, the story.
Well, it is a big deal. I'll, I'll give you the inside scoop. Okay, because we haven't really come out publicly, but we're going to have a, a press conference about it. There's a nationwide organization that has been working with cities, counties, private organizations around the country that helps relieve medical debt from people who are debt burdened, might be facing bankruptcy or getting hounded by bill collectors for money they owe for medical procedures. I'm putting $100,000 into this project from excess funds I've accumulated over the seven years I've been on council. Money that either fell through, for example, I had a, a soccer field we were going to fund for $150,000. The school district said, we don't want it. We're not going to do it. So I've had some excess funds. $100,000 is going to reduce $10 million of medical debt in San Antonio this year. She helped me start that, Kelsey helped me start that program, working with the company. And I want her to help me finish it out. So, you know, to me, they're, they're known commodities who did good work, who are available. And, you know, and she's only been working part time. She wouldn't be a full time worker. And, you know, like every other employee in the city today, if you want to work for a political campaign on your part time anymore, there's, there's no reason why you can't do that. The city voters changed that law last November. So if she wants to work for somebody who wants to take my place because she knows District Nine and can advise her on how to win that race, God bless her. I, I like that candidate. I do endorse Angie. I think she'll be a great councilperson to follow after me. But I'm only one vote, so.
Along those lines, we've covered it and maybe it might be beneficial to hear it out of your, in your own words. You were going to run, then you worked on running.
Sure.
And, and I run in, so can you kind of, for the, the readers and the people watching?
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's important for people to understand that. You know, I, I first decided to run in November of 23. And I, and I decided that based on the support I had from people in my community asking me all the time and my wife's support and everything. So in January, I announced. You probably remember that disastrous announcement when I, people booing. It was something else.
That was, that was a different issue that it was not, you were not the issue.
I know, but it was, it was quite a circus, but.
I thought you handled that very well.
Yeah. But, you know, I, I then began, you know, deliberately campaigning and, and working real hard. But there's, there's always a lot of things going on in the council, very, very busy. And the campaigning was very, very busy. Around late summer, September, I started having a few concerns. And I'll be frank, they were health concern. I won't tell you what they were. But I had some health concerns that started bothering me. And I started wondering, you know, are these permanent? Are they long term? Do I need to be more concerned about them? And so I went and saw several medical professionals and talked with them. And then you got examinations, got all kinds of checkups. And, and they prescribed some treatment, prescribed some things for me to do. And so in, in November, I said, you know, I, I don't know that I'm in the best shape to be able to run and serve for four years when there was going to be a four year term. You know, I thought all along, well, if it's going to be a two year term, yeah, I could serve two years. And, you know, if I want to serve two more, we'll just see how I am. So those kind of things were coming together. So to make a long story short, I started following a regimen my healthcare professionals gave me. I've been going to the gym regularly. I've lost almost 20 pounds. I've changed my diet. I've, the medication has been changed that I take. And I'm feeling good. My doctors have all said, you look good. All your numbers are good. As far as they were concerned, I had a good, clean bill of health. And so that was in December and January. And in January, I started to become concerned about who were some of the, the top names that were being written about and talked about as candidates for mayor. And literally, I was feeling, you know, there's people out here who's starting to raise a lot of money from places other than San Antonio and either, other than Texas. And these people don't know anything about city government. And I don't care what you've done in your past. If you don't understand how city government works, how it's worked for the people. If you don't understand what the people are saying in this community over the years. If, if you don't have the knowledge and the understanding and the insight of how things can help people in this community. I wonder, you know, are we just saying because you're raising the most money, you can put your face on TV or send out a dozen mailers? Can you buy the seat of mayor in San Antonio? And that really worried me. And I decided I needed to get back in this race and offer myself as a choice again because I had so much support. And I wanted to make sure people know they have a choice of people who know how the city does work and can work and have ideas and ways of moving us forward. And, you know, so that was a big motivation for me. I'm very worried about the, the mayor's race being sold, so, so to speak, to the highest bidder. And we know there are special interests that are trying to pour money into the race of some of these candidates so that they can have a stronger say in what happens here in San Antonio. And it's the people in this community who should have the strongest say. And it should be people who've been living here and working here and understand what the community wants and needs. Who should be leading the city going forward. So, you know, that's all of those pieces together. Plus, I have to say, my wife retired last May. And we were, we were going through a period of struggling. What are we going to do together as her, as she goes forward in her retirement? And I really had to know that my wife loved me and cared about me and was beside me moving forward if I got back into this race. So all of the things just came together. And I decided to wait till the last day. I thought, you know, no use doing it any sooner. I'll wait till the last day. Maybe it'll get me a little publicity and people pay attention. So I did.